I'm gonna call to order the Board of Equalization Regular Meeting. Today is Monday, January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five. It is ten o'clock. And first, I want to say that sixty-eight Oklahoma Statute, Section twenty-eight, sixty-three, both provides and dictates that the Oklahoma County Board of Equalization commence its sessions on the fourth Monday of January and shall endeavor to complete our business, which is hearing appeals, among other responsibilities, by May thirty-first. If the volume and calendar requires further time, then by action of Board of County Commissioners, the time may be extended. We are all here. We have a full complement. And I will now call to roll Mr. Brechtown.
Present.
Ms. Teresa Sellers.
Present.
And I'm Eleanor Thompson. We have various items on our agenda. And we have a full complement of the Assessors' Office. The first item is going to be the Discussion on Possible Action Regarding the Minutes We Had at Our Last Meeting, July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
I knew that we accept the meetings, the minutes as stated.
I second.
I have a... All in favor, Mr. Town?
Yes.
Yes.
And I say yes. All right. The next item, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding the Election of a Chairman and a Vice Chairman for the Calendar Year two thousand and twenty-five. So I'm the Chair right now, so I can't say. I'll hear from either one of you guys.
So I would like to move that Eleanor Thompson be the Chairperson for the Calendar Year two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second.
All in favor, Mr. Town?
We only have one item here that we need to add.
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Then I will...
I will, I will move that Brechtown continue as Vice Chair.
I'm gonna withdraw my motion. And if you care to put both those into one, we can vote it on.
Okay. All right. So I will make a motion that we continue with Eleanor Thompson as the Chair and Brechtown as the Vice Chair for the Calendar Year two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor, Mr. Town?
Yes.
Ms. Sellers?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. The next item on our agenda is Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Policies and Procedures for the two thousand and twenty-five Board of Equalization Section.
I'll let you go first.
Yeah, I'd like to have, to consider two policies and procedures that would bring us closer to full compliance with the law. And I don't believe the first one is, but I think it would help us when we get into some of the longer agendas, and that would be after the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, to have a section where we approve the items on this agenda, on that current agenda. There's many times that we'll go along and we'll have two or three items or more that are pulled, and we'll come to those and we'll say, okay, well, this, this item's pulled. I'd just rather pull them all at once. And then if there was also a non-material change in like a number that ever comes up, you know, for example, something got inverted, or, you know, a decimal point got moved someplace, then we could do those corrections there rather than kind of fumbling around with them item by item. So I would just suggest that we have an item that will cause us to approve the agenda, and then we have to vote on approving the agenda. And then the second item would be a roll call vote on any and all agenda items. There's some, there's, there's a portion in the law where we're physically supposed to, or we're supposed to sign all of the letters of determination, the decision letters. And that may be okay in Kingfisher County, where they have fifteen of these a year, and they're spread out over three or four weeks, but we had over five hundred hearings last year. And I, and I believe that if we have a roll call vote where each of our votes is recorded, then that would give our Secretary the ability to use the electronic signature process that they have been doing up to this point.
Right.
And if our, if our attorney representing us from the District Attorney's Office thinks that would be fine, we could go on with it. If they don't think it's fine, then we would probably have to go where we sign every one of those after, probably on the Monday, the next meeting. We'd have to come in early and sign them prior to, because there's no way you could get them out by Monday.
Right.
We're having, unless we're sitting there signing sometimes thirty or forty different documents apiece that afternoon after the meeting. I mean, I've, I've observed several counties' equalization. I mean, they come in and they, they make their decision there, sign it there, but that's just not what we can do in this county due to the volume and frankly, some of the complexity of some of the agenda items that we have. So those would be my two suggestions.
I'm fine with that.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we adopt those as our policy. All right.
I'll second.
All in favor, Mr. Town?
Yes.
All right.
Teresa. I agree.
And all are agrees. All right. And if, if you have any, any questions about our doubts about what Brett said, we can, you guys can get together and talk. Okay. The other thing on the policies and procedures, what we did last year and the year before, we have our hearings during the week, and then we meet on Friday, and, and Friday is our decision day, unless you've got a problem meeting. And sometimes we'll meet like Monday and Tuesday, and maybe Wednesday or Thursday will be our decision day. But I think we're gonna hold, unless you guys object, to having a decision day where we consider all of the things that have happened that week. You agree with that?
Yeah, I think that's worked out fine.
What, Mr. Stein, would, is it okay with you? Just to have a decision, we're gonna continue to have a decision day, not decide the day of the hearings.
Be careful about having any conversations between each other before decisions made.
Oh, sure. We know. Yeah, the open meetings act applies to us. Yes. Yes.
And that's currently our, our practice and procedure, so we wouldn't have to vote on that.
That's correct. Any more? Any more? I don't see anything else. Okay. The next item, item four, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding the Remaining Two Thousand and Twenty-four Five-Year Manufacturers' Exemption Reports, requested by Chad... I didn't pronounce the last name.
State School.
State School Assessor, Personal Property Assistant Supervisor. Did we say your name, Brett?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Board, I'm gonna, you may pass these out. This is a copy of the twenty-four exemption, five-year exemption list of accounts. I folded it to the second page. Those two, this, uh, this is regarding two XM applications, XM two and XM four for Latika, that were not on the last year's report, the initial form.
Okay.
That was due to them previously being denied application by the Tax Commission. So... We place ourselves this time, June or July, June last year, presented the form you all voted up to approve it, and then we go on through the year until November of twenty-four. And in discussions with the Tax Commission on a few other XM accounts, that was brought up that where were the XM two and XM four from a previous year?
Okay.
In twenty-three. And we told them that we did not submit those to them, this report or to the Tax Commission for review because of the previous denial. And they said that those needed to be still submitted even though they've been previously denied. So they're on this agenda because we still need these two forms signed by the clerk to submit the application to the Tax Commission, and whether they denied or accepted or whatever, we need that this form signed before we can submit those.
Do you want our action to be to receive this or to approve it?
I, I would like for it to be approved.
Okay.
So we approve, approve it as amended?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Please.
All right. I move that concerning Agenda Item Number Four, that we approve as amended the Two Thousand and Twenty-four Five-Year Manufacturers' Exemption Report.
I'll second.
All right. It's been properly moved and seconded, that we approve this report as amended. Roll call, Mr. Brechtown?
Yes.
Ms. Teresa Sellers?
Yes.
And I'm Eleanor Thompson, and I say yes. Just a question. Do you remember the, the Bitcoin people, the argument? Were they trying to apply as well from the ASC yet?
Uh, no, they, they applied, and the Tax Commission denied their exemption, so... And they've taken that a little bit further, the PS, and they've also denied it.
So we'll probably hear from them in a minute. I would imagine. Okay. All right. So, Mr. Stein, would you like to say something to us?
Yes, I would.
All right.
There are people that are serious legislators, and there are those that are not serious legislators.
Okay.
Currently, the state of Oklahoma has provided a huge property tax rate last year by eliminating the sales tax on restaurants. This year, out of the twelve billion dollar budget that is approved by the State Board of Equalization, the state is anywhere between one hundred and ninety-one and five hundred million dollars short. Every dollar that is cut will mean fifty cents being cut out of education.
Oh.
The legislature has proposed probably thirty bills that have to do with changes in ad valorem or elimination of ad valorem. Assessors all across the state are doing calculations, trying to figure out how would you replace those funds. The serious legislators are worried. The unserious legislators don't care, and they are determined to do whatever they can to, at least it appears, to propose legislation. One of them is to study ad valorem and determine how we can eliminate ad valorem property taxes by two thousand and thirty. The question is...
And replace the money with what?
That's not part of the discussion, and, and that's why you have people who are serious at the legislature. And if these trends continue, if you want to be a top-ten state, you can't be a top-ten state in education if you're behind, if you're fifty-three behind Puerto Rico, the U.S. Virgin Islands, Guam, and District of Columbia. And sadly, I implement, we'll get you a list of all of them. But the, the bills are devastating. It's probably the largest coordinated attack on ad valorem. And I don't know how you'd be able to accomplish all of what you do without changing the Constitution dramatically and having to raise some sort of revenue, but the legislature is loathe to try and replace revenue. They merely want to cut and reduce funding. So that's what we're up against this year at the legislature. It's the largest assault on ad valorem, which is the most reliable funding source in state government, and that's why ad valorem property taxes are the, the basis of funding for state government. It's about seven billion dollars. Every one of the assessors across the state is trying to figure out what the impact would be on their local communities, what they have to raise local sales taxes. Will the state of Oklahoma provide some relief? It doesn't appear that there's any provided.
There were two, two things. One, is there such a thing as no ad valorem in any of the fifty states?
I don't know. The, there are, it, it is the most reliable funding source, and I don't know if any state has actually eliminated ad valorem. We're gonna be doing some more research with the International Association of Assessing Officers and find out.
Okay. And the deadline for bill filing pass was that last week, so...
There's about three thousand bills. There'll be about fifteen hundred to two thousand that may make it through, but, you know, the dilemma of having term limits is that there, there are few legislators that have any experience in ad valorem. And the, one of the former assessors is, is now a state senator, and I visited with her. You know, the, the intent of the legislature is real. Sadly, the, the attitude appears to be ready, fire, aim. We don't have a solution, but we could create a really great problem. And schools across the state, superintendents across the state, certainly are gonna have to be aware of what's gonna be happening, and we'll see what happens. I mean, the, the big article from the State Chamber of Commerce, Locals Chamber of Commerce, we've gotta do something to improve education. And that doesn't appear to be the direction that most of these legislative initiatives are in.
So the lady, the lawyer in your office, is she the one you task for reading all those bills?
No, ma'am. We have, we have our whole executive team that reads all the bills and tries to find out where we're getting them all in chronological order. There, there are constitutional changes. There are efforts to change the ad valorem law, and, and sadly, the little teeny changes in ad valorem for a small community in a county with fifteen thousand parcels, that may not be much an impact on the state. We'll be able to pick up through the school funding formula and replace those funds. But when you're talking about Oklahoma County, where we provide about a billion dollars, seven hundred million dollars for education in Oklahoma County with three hundred and twenty-five thousand parcels, the legislative impact is extremely important to evaluate. Sadly, the Tax Commission rarely looks at that impact because they don't see it from a state perspective. They look at it from the county perspective. These changes are gonna impact the state dramatically, and somebody's gonna have to look at the impact and say, okay, this is not, this is, this is a zero-sum game. How do we get to be able to fund the essential services that are constitutional?
Yes.
And statutory with a reduction of perhaps seven billion dollars in revenue? And, and it's, it's a, it is amazing what's happened with the legislature so far. I've never seen this many ad valorem bills ever introduced, and all of them have an extremely negative impact on county government, being able to provide our, our constitutional requirements, jail, and all of the other duties and essential services. And for Oklahoma County, the, the, these efforts could be extremely devastating on our ability to be able to do anything.
Okay. What, what, what do you all see as, as our volume this year? I guess our time has...
The, the legislature has repeatedly addressed the issue of trying to keep property taxes low.
Yes.
Currently, we have about ninety-eight billion dollars worth of value in Oklahoma County, but we're not assessing ad valorem on all of that.
Right.
Because of the short circuiting that's occurred, which means that our budget, while it could grow, while the inflationary indexes can mean twenty percent increase in costs, the amount of revenue that a county has is very limited because of the growth that's restricted by constitutional mandates. So not only are they talking about further restrictions and elimination of assessments and property taxes, they're also talking about elimination of these existing programs. And it's, it's very disturbing, and, and the assessors across the state are, you know, we're trying to do our jobs, and the job is changing all the time, and these, these efforts are, are extremely disturbing.
You guys have a paid lobbyist?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay.
And there's, the county commissioners also have a lobbyist, and we all, we live in a big city, most of us. We live in a big county, nineteen cities and towns. Oklahoma City is the largest city in the state. I think Edmund is third or fourth. Those are both in our county. We have, we have the largest amount of school districts. We have huge amounts of expenses that are done for these, these services. In small communities and small counties, county government's the only government they have. And we're, we're at the position where with all of the cities and towns, it's, it's complicated in Oklahoma County, but the, the funding of these essential services from the county in sixty-five to seventy counties across the state, that may be the only government they know from their county seat. So anyway, I, I wanted to bring you the good news of what's happening with the legislature, and it's about as good as it gets right now.
So it's very disturbing, especially with talks of personal income reductions. And then I know there's at least one mandatory raise in expenses. It's almost a hundred million dollars in the private school payback to them. It's a tax, basically, a tax refund or tax rebate. Now, I do know if there's revenue failures, that that is supposed to be frozen, no, to, not revenue fa, not the legal definition of a revenue failure, but if we're not increasing, I don't think that increases, so that may stop that. But, I mean, that's, what you're talking about is very disturbing, because that's the bait, the bedrock of how we fund everything. You can't off, you can't offset the loss that a school district would have in its general fund by the, by state funds if that state fund is shrinking too. I mean, we can't, can't balance the formula if the state funds are decreasing as well as your local funds. It's a double whammy for a lot of schools.
If, if, if you eliminate ad valorem, how do you pay the bonds that school districts pay?
Well, you're, you're, it's, it's the basis for a lot of things, and sinking funds in Oklahoma County as well.
Well, you'd have to, you'd, they would have to pay out before that happened. That's a legal obligation, I don't think that any, anybody could ignore.
You think that person that introduced that bill knows that?
Oh, there's, there's a number. No, I don't. I don't, because I, I believe that there are, there are, with, with term limits, the amount of knowledge having to do with ad valorem isn't there anymore. When, when there were people who had an experience of ad valorem, instead of just hearing all of their, their constituents say, we've gotta, I, I don't get rid of the property tax, because I never get to own my own property, and they don't understand, they, they don't have the capacity to be able to explain that the essential services of government, where we have, the reason we have society at the county level is because of county government. And sadly, when we, when we see legislators that are overly zealous on trying to transform the state of Oklahoma with, with ideas that are, are never challenged because other legislators are in their same, same effort, and it, it's gonna, how many will pass? How many will be able to fight, get through? I don't know, but it, it, when you're looking at thirty, around thirty resolutions and statutory changes that would devastate all of the ramifications of bond packages, city, city bonds, sinking funds, all of those things that are paid through the funding mechanism, it, it would be, it would be a devastating thing across the state of Oklahoma, which means that, that you would think they wouldn't pass. But there seems to be a lot of support. And with, you know, if you, if you don't have a strong legislative leadership team that knows the difference and, and can, can counsel these folks, then, you know, they're, and you, you could be letting some, some bad legislation come through that could really hurt the entire state.
No, I, I had this conversation actually outside this with some friends of mine, so I was aware of it. I figured that was probably what he was gonna bring up, but it's frustrating.
Well, we'll be monitoring those, you know, and, and as, when, when I get to live in Oklahoma County, all the assessors across the state, they're asking me and other local assessors, please go out and explain this to legislators. That's the hard part. I mean, legislators, they either don't wanna get it, or they don't care. And, and sadly, they're the ones that are writing the bills and heralding these wonderful property tax savings efforts in their local newspapers, and everybody says, rah, 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 that's a great idea. And then you're gonna have the whole, the, the groups that are out there that, that will be rallying and, and making threatening phone calls to legislators about, you better pass this bill, or I'm gonna come out and, and run against you, or I'll find somebody to run against you, and we'll, we'll defeat you. I mean, it's, it's a, it's an interesting game that's gonna be happening this year. I don't know what's gonna happen, but we'll be out there watching it, and as soon as we get our report together with all that information, we'll be sending it out to you so you can see, and all the other county officers too, because it's, it's county commissioners, treasurer, everybody.
The entire county, but...
Yeah. Sheriff, all the budgets.
You know, I take care of my mother-in-law, and she's eighteen hundred acres in Custer in Newey County, worth about eight million dollars. She paid about nineteen hundred dollars in taxes on that. She owns a rent house in Deer Creek. She paid almost four thousand dollars in taxes.
And that's one of those things, we have a book.
That's one of those.
The, the valuation of agricultural land, I, I think we use an actual book, a real book from nineteen eighty-four to be able to calculate those values.
Based on land, land use or land quality.
The Tax Commission and legislature is loathe to try and address agricultural issues in land values and agriculture.
Do, do you ever go to the State Board of Equalization meetings? That this will come up? Have they had a meeting since the bills?
They've already had one meeting where they certified less than a hundred, they, the shortfall of a hundred and ninety-one million dollars. But the legislators I've talked to say that it's gonna be closer to five hundred million dollars. Out of a twelve billion dollar budget.
Well, just the city of Oklahoma City is, is, is in a shortfall. They, the sales tax is not what they thought it was gonna be.
There you go. It's, it, you know, and we talked about, those are critics.
Oh, really?
Economic policies have trickled down economics. They, they say, well, if we just cut taxes, that means more growth, and if, if your economy isn't growing, then you're not gonna be able to replace those funds. And I think the evidence is, at least, if you wanna reduce taxes, it's great to do it when the economy's grown, when the economy is, is stagnant, you're gonna have a, a problem, and that's exactly what's happened with, currently, in the, in the state of Oklahoma. The, the growth is not there in revenue, which was the big concern that a lot of legislators had, because those other ones that are term limited, they can go back home, and all of the problems that are happening now, not their problem. So all the newly elected ones are figuring out, how do I deal with a five hundred million dollar shortfall?
Okay. The prefiled bills, are any of them giving any more exemptions?
Yes. Oh, yes. One of them is a, is a joint resolution that would give everyone who's sixty-five years of age and older an assessment freeze regardless of income up to a value of property of five hundred thousand dollars. In a, in a county like Oklahoma County, you'd be, I, I, I'm gonna ask the legislators, have you talked to your superintendent? Because what you're saying is that you will not see any increases on those properties unless you pass bond packages, and if we don't have any ad valorem to pay off the bond packages, then you're not gonna have any bond package. It, it's a, set, because legislators don't understand the interconnections between what happened with property taxes, how we fund our schools, how we fund our city projects, how we fund sinking funds, how we do all the things that create the quality of life issues in the county. So we'll keep you posted on that. As soon as we get our list, our list ready, we hope to have a hypernet for all the bills so you can actually leave the room soon.
Do, are we, are there any expirations appreciably of any of these exemptions? You know, like, Amazon has the exemption, is it five years? Or any of those about to expire? Not necessarily just on Amazon, but, you know, where we are. Because you told me last year you were concerned about, between the cities and the state giving exemptions, that's, they're not understanding the impact that's having.
Well, the, the problem that, that happens with the, the air, the wind generators and everything else, when they, when they want the exemption for property taxes, they usually inflate the value, so the county Assessors' Office reflects that value, and then the, the state reimburses the county schools for the value that's set. And then after five years, instead of a ninety million dollar wind generator, they say, well, it's after, it's pre, it's not, it's not worth much anymore. It's five years old, it's probably worth fifteen dollars. They, the, the amount that the, the school district will get now will be substantially less than what they've been getting for the past few years.
That, that was the argument they, we had over the Bitcoin things, how fast they depreciated. I, I just remembered that, and that was interesting. I, Ms. Ford, do you wanna say anything to us?
I have a touch for what you do.
Oh, sure.
I do think that maybe for your forecast, it's very similar to what was there last year, because this board's response to a number of notices that we're gonna be mailing out.
Okay.
And some forecasts work for that. We are somewhat in the same number range from two hundred and eighty-five to two hundred and ninety thousand property notices that we will be making. So I would think that the board's work will be very consistent, centered upon us each year. doing each year.
Hey, how do I ask about Mr. Whatever his name is?
Ryan.
Yeah, did you?
Ryan.
Is Ryan, are they gonna get it?
Done.
Uh, we don't have specifics on those, but they own those properties, they see increases, then likely I would think that we would see some action in this.
I think it's a, it's a, it's a.
We're just, uh, I think this week, expecting our first mailing of about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Then there'll be another mailing in approximately two to three weeks in that same range. Of the three hundred and thirty-five thousand that Larry mentioned, probably two hundred and eighty-five, two hundred and ninety thousand, we are projecting to receive.
Are you gonna follow your same procedure, resident goes out first, then commercial and then personal again?
Local again. Do you agree? Uh, they, they will still be the same as for the personal, some of that, because of the timeline, so statute that personal property conditions come, send information by March fifteenth, and then April fifteenth before it's second. So some of that will come through the April timeline, so it says that.
What was our two thousand twenty-four property tax valuation, increase or decrease for the county?
Overall, I believe overall we were at about five, what, six percent value.
It's like six-three last year.
Yeah. And some of that's just, uh, we, as Barry mentioned, the three and five percent capital expectations, the circuit breaker that's in place, that the market conditions were exceeding that, but that circuit breaker goes into effect, I would say probably ten percent of our property off, high to that increment, that limitation increase.
How is the, uh, disabled veterans exemption, is it still going up like that?
We've got more than six thousand currently, and we don't get reimbursed for that, so the county budget takes a hit.
Right.
About sixteen million total taxes, one point six of that for the county budget with that reimbursement.
I was surprised when I looked at that a year or two ago that, I mean, of course, Lawton would be number one, so looking at first school district, but Edmund was number two, uh, more than Midwest City, more than a lot of other ones that had just.
The legislature, one of the efforts is to, to create a staggered system as well, where if you have seventy-five percent disability, you get seventy-five percent rate on the property taxes, fifty percent, twenty-five percent. So they're trying to increase the amount of production that the county can, through the other parts. We were, we proposed a law that would update the income level for, uh, people who are handicapped. And, and then we added first responders to be eligible for a, a tax credit from the state of Oklahoma through a, a form that's called five thirty-eight H. Current income level for that to qualify is twelve thousand total.
Twelve thousand.
And we're, we're increasing, we're trying to increase the income level, seventy-five percent of the senior freeze dollar, I think it's sixty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars in Oklahoma County, changes from county to county. But that way you can target it. And you can say, okay, if you're a first responder, if you earn less than this amount of money, you'll get a tax credit instead of having to take it out of our ad valorem base because we don't get reimbursed for any. Right now, we're losing about thirty million dollars a year in exemptions if the county doesn't get reimbursed.
And thank you.
Oklahoma County, you mentioned Lawton, but Oklahoma County still has the majority, the, the biggest number of high percentage disabled qualifications.
I was just looking at it as a school district.
You're right. But the total wise, county wise, just as everything is, Oklahoma County is the largest except for perhaps square miles, but we rank number one in everything except for quality and first word.
Do you have anything further? Glad to see everybody. Except where's Steve?
Stop. What we fired him?
Tell him I said hello.
He's not here.
Okay. All right.
Watching Stevie still.
To entertain a motion to, to, uh, a giant, there's nothing perfect.
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, Mr. Town?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Sellers?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We're adjourned.